You're ready, we're good. We'll call this meeting to order and entertain motions.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session with the purpose of discussing mitigation in the employment industry of particular individuals.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Emily. Any discussion, debate, conversation? All in favor? Everyone here, Todd is not. Um, I wish I could tell you when we'll be back. We'll be back. Karen, yes, our process is that most of our items be discussed and or moved from committee to the full board and um, this one we're doing just slightly different this year, but still open for discussion.
Correct, and it's the only reason is because there isn't a finance committee agenda tonight, so these will be on the consent agenda, right, for next, um, the next meeting of the board. And typically at finance committee, all consent agenda items are discussed and reviewed. And so what we tried to do with items five point one through five point six is to be able to give the full um overview of each of those items. They're all pretty straightforward, right? And then again, these are samples of things that you would see on a consent agenda for new board members, which typically are these groupings of these items that you would vote on as a, as a group. Um, if there are questions about any one of these items, five point one through five point six, I'm happy to answer them. Um, but they are all, some have already been discussed, for example, five point six, um, the electric sign, we've discussed that in facilities time and again, this is just the next phase in the process. Health and welfare services, we know that that's a billing that happens whenever um students um receive services that in a district that is in Ithaca City proper, we bill back to those districts, right, for those services. And we, you'll see health and welfare billing throughout the year. Um, you'll see bids on things for things like milk, bread, ice cream and facilities work, so you'll see bids commonly. Um, you'll also see uh contractual obligations, uh which is here as well. And then anytime we have items that are no longer needed by the district as determined typically by the department leader or team leader. Um, those items, you can't just get rid of those, they have to be surplus if they have value. And oftentimes with this one, you'll see, for an example, one would go, some of those items might go for scrap metal because that would be better for us because they have no value to be used again. Others will go to an auction site and we will collect the money there too. Um, you cannot just give that property or give it away, you have to try to get a value for it in public entities.
I have a question about agenda item five point five, the establishment of a scholarship fund.
Yes, so this is.
For me, it's both specific, but it's actually just a much more general. How we operate, what are the parameters? Of course, the district would always be willing to accept public funds, even though this is a fund that would be given to students in a scholarship way, right? But seems like you were already prepared and ready for us to ask this question.
So this actually, this scholarship has been in existence for quite some time. And unfortunately, um, the, the Nardi family, um, the, the stewards of this were deceased. And so this is actually a transaction that we've been working on for almost a year and a half, if not two, to actually change this trust um and the banking mechanism to be able to give this scholarship out to students. Um, and so this is actually just um, the, the, through legal, um, many, many, many months of working on this to be able to actually get this to a place where we could establish it again in keeping um it really the way that it was initially given to us, which I can't tell you the actual start date, but I know it's like decades old. Um, and then to be able to reestablish that and then be able to have those parameters to give that scholarship as originally um given to us. But John, in, in the future, anyone that would want to start a scholarship fund, there's a couple of ways to do that. We partner with IPEI, that's one way that you could actually start a scholarship and go through them. That's the donor group for specifically Ithaca teachers and educators. Um, or you can work with the district and um, we would, we would work through our legal and you know, whoever the trust and agency legal is to establish those scholarships. Typically, then we track interest, right, and that interest then um accumulates and that goes toward the scholarships and hopes that keeps it lit, right, you know, vibrant, um, moving on the future. There are some scholarships where during the times when they were established, they were very small and interest wasn't great. And they do have an end of, of sort of um funding stream for them. So depending on um what people would like to be able to provide, you'll see these a lot of times during the senior um awards or junior awards, right? I mean, even during commendations, there are awards that are established um in people's honor. So public school entities can accept those gifts in that way.
Now, this says in, in the documentation that selection by the Board of Education. Now, this. Okay, in collaboration with the high school?
So Karen, that could, um, I don't know the history of it. In my history, I don't remember the in collaboration with the board happening unless there's maybe a smaller committee. Um, I do know that this scholarship, I don't believe, was granted um because of the fact that we couldn't actually give money from it. So we, we couldn't actually give money from this scholarship because we didn't have access to it because it was tied up um in that legal situation, so.
So we haven't been given any money from this scholarship?
My understanding is this one for the past at least year, we could not, we could not provide funds from this, that's my understanding.
Yeah, and so to correct Sean, it says in consultation with high school administration and staff. And I'm wondering what ownership do we as Board of Education having the decision making when we're not decide, deciders of any of the other scholarships?
Yeah, I would, I would have to probably refer you to the high school leadership team to see what the process has been to date and if there's um any kind of modifications to that process moving forward.
Well, before I would really vote on this word, and I would need to know all of that beforehand.
And Karen, just, you know, I plan to follow up, and I don't know if this has already been done, but to ask our legal counsel about that very idea, is this something that where most of the scholarships have this language, that the board is the ultimate purveyor of sort of the old, you know, the keepers of the the brighter or whatever it may be, um, because there's a lot of scholarships that happen at multiple schools uh that the board is not informed about the choice of the decision. It's the administration or our select group that has been invited to make that happen. But also just wanted to understand what our role and responsibility is as well, so, right, and consultation, not collaboration.
And I guess finally, I'd like to add, and forgive me if I have this wrong, but I feel like a lot of times scholarships have a specific guy, like whether it be a student pursuing science or whatnot, it'd be, it'd be great to know what the family wanted the scholarship to be for, um, to have a little more direction on what students should be applying for it.
Yeah, part of that was given, this one says it has to be a student that's going on to college. So that's part of it, so I imagine it's to help encourage young folks to go to college, but yes, we, that additional information would be helpful as well. Absolutely. Any other thoughts, comments, Adam? Any other questions about any of the finance items that will be up on the consent agenda? Adam, please.
Six, the BGM, electronic sign. I think I was reading earlier, I think the cost of setting the thousand dollars for the sign. Um, I guess I just had a few questions about it, is that, does that come from capital of the beginning project fund?
Yeah, so this is part of the capital project, right, the twenty nineteen capital project.
Do have an end of, of sort of um funding stream for them. So depending on um what people would like to be able to provide. You'll see these a lot of times during the senior um awards or junior awards, right? I mean, even during commendations, there are awards that are established um in people's honor. So. Public school entities can't accept those gifts in that way.
Now, this says in, in the documentation that selection by the Board of Education. Now this. Okay, in collaboration with the high school?
So Karen, that could, um, I don't know the history of it. In my history, I don't remember the in collaboration with the board happening unless there's maybe a smaller committee. I do know that this scholarship, I don't believe was granted um because of the fact that we couldn't actually give money from it. So we, we couldn't actually give money from this scholarship because we didn't have access to it because it was tied up um in that legal situation. So.
So we haven't been given any much from this scholarship?
My understanding is this one for the past at least year, we could not, we could not provide funds from this. That's my understanding.
Yeah. And so to correct Sean, it says in consultation with high school administration and staff. And I'm wondering what ownership do we as Board of Education having the decision making? When we're not decide, deciders of any of the other scholarships?
Yeah, I would, I would have to probably refer you to the high school leadership team to see what the process has been to date and if there's um any kind of modifications to that process moving forward.
Well, before I would really vote on this word, and I would need to know all of that beforehand.
And Karen, just, you know, I plan to follow up and I don't know if this has already been done, but to ask our legal counsel about that very idea. Is this something that where most of the scholarships have this language that the board is the ultimate purveyor of sort of the old, you know, the keepers of the, the. Right, or whatever it may be. Um, because there's a lot of scholarships that happen at multiple schools. Uh, that the board is not informed about the choice of the decision. It's the administration or our select group that has been invited to make that happen. But also just wanted to understand what our role and responsibility is as well. So, right, and consultation, not collaboration.
And I guess finally, I'd like to add, and forgive me if I have this wrong, but I feel like a lot of times scholarships have a specific. Guide, like whether it be a student pursuing science or whatnot, it'd be, it'd be great to know what the family wanted the scholarship to be for. To have a little more direction on what students should be applying for it.
Yeah, part of that was given. This one says it has to be a student that's going on to college. So that's part of it. So I imagine it's to help. Encourage young folks to go to college. But yes, we, that additional information would be helpful as well. Absolutely. Any other thoughts, comments, Adam? Any other questions about any of the finance items that will be up on the consent agenda? Adam, please.
Yeah, so this is part of the capital project, right? The twenty nineteen capital project. Um, one of the elements of the capital project when we went forward with that was for enhanced. Um, building safety as well as communication with families. And so if you've noticed over the course of the past couple of years. More and more of these sort of like kiosk-like electric signage opportunities have been placed outside of our buildings. Um, and I want to really stress that they are always done if in a neighborhood in consultation with the neighbors. So this sign, one of the reasons why it's a little bit later to the board where others like Enfield, Caroline, we've gotten those pretty quickly. Is when we're in a neighborhood, we want to make sure that the neighbors understand these can be dimmed, right? They can be turned off. They actually will. Um, we will follow um any guidelines from, for example, this one with the city of Ithaca, right? If there were any permits that were additionally needed. Um, and so just so you know that that's, you'll see these rolling out, but that's part of the communication plan for families. Um, from the twenty nineteen capital project. So this is already in the budget for B J M specifically.
And then since we get fifty-two cents to the dollar for that, I think the cost is like thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand.
Fifty-eight one, it's actually fifty-eight one. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to shout from the back of the chair. It's even better news. Fifty-eight one. Fifty-eight one, yeah. Fifty-eight cents, fifty-eight, fifty-eight cents. Yeah, yeah.
And one tenth of a penny.
That's right. There you go. That's right. But when you're dealing with like thousands and millions, those little bits matter.
So Adam, I appreciate that question because that number that figured caught me as well. And I have to remind myself that. Um, this is something that we've been intentionally doing at all schools. So, you know, I get to drive by the South Hill one every single day and see whose birthday it is, which is absolutely fantastic. And those who drive by know what I'm talking about. Um, but I have been hearing some very positive feedback from parents and caregivers who have these signs put up that that is increasing communication. It's not static. The one at B J M said, have a nice day for I don't know how long, right? And so the ability to give information about P T A mediums, about updates. Um, the, there is a cost associated with that. We understand the financial constraints that we find ourselves in. And there was also a communication benefit, particularly for that community, given that it's also a very walkable school. So. Um, there's a little bit more time to grab the information as well. And we've been doing it. I, this may be one of the later middle schools. Fall Creek doesn't have one yet, right?
You got it, correct. Um, Hugo Heights and Fall Creek actually, I, based on our conversations in the neighborhood, they have not really been interested in having that type of style. So even like L A C S, you'll notice that doesn't have one, right? That's one. There's actually a kiosk in the lobby because of the glass. We actually have. Um, a large screen that conveys that information. So they went with a different style, but again, to try to educate families. So we're trying to. Community by community, really make sure that we are still good neighbors and good partners with that community.
I, I have a question and I am going to be asking this a lot over the next year. And as my kids and I would joke, I sound like Debbie Downer, so forgive me. Um, but can these funds at this point be paused and allocated elsewhere, say fixing an elevator or setting it aside for a broken roof or whatever might come up in the year, given. That we don't have another capital project underway, you know, for emergencies, basically.
So to answer your question, everything that we would want to do has to go through the state ed process. You have to go through design development. Um, we would have to authorize Tetra Tech to start the plans for that. Um, then it would, you know, get submitted to state education department. I think I want to say there, I think it's like eighteen month queue right now for, um, you know, managing this. Um, and then it has to go out for bid and then you have to get in the queue for the contractors after the bids are awarded. So you're talking a couple of year process to address things that this was in the budget. Now you could, you could absolutely stop any, you know. If, if, if it's not done yet, I mean, we're sort of in the queue with talk. We want to make sure this is like, they know this is coming. This has been planned for a couple of years. If, if you want to stop anything at any time, know that there has been funding put to the planning of this.
Right.
Right? Into the, the documents that got submitted to state ed into the work, right?
Right.
Authorize these bids and things. This is a state contract, so this didn't have to be bid. Um, top sports is actually in a state contract list, so you can buy. An item like this with them, but like the electric work's already been done, right? As part of the project. So. This is probably pretty late, but if there are other things in the queue that we're talking about and we wanted to swap something. Just know that to do that, you want to ask those questions, right? Like how much has already been done in terms of the planning for this? Because you're, you're paying for that design development as you go.
Right. So we'd be wasting money to abandon this at this point. And it's already, the community is excited and.
Yeah, you'd be like, so there, there would be costs, you know, that you would maybe then later on utilize. I don't know what the cost of the signage would be at that time.
Right.
When you want to go buy it. And, and again, I do want to say this did align with the priorities of engaging families. And communities around information sharing for our buildings as community centers.
Thank you.
This wouldn't go to the stage of trying to abandon it because after being a parent of two who graduated from B J M, this has been long in the queue. Instead of having parents going and volunteering in the cold to hook up the signage door to open it up and put things up. Yeah, this has been long in the queue. So we would really have to engage with that community.
Thank you. That helps a lot.
Additional questions?
I have um one last question about five point four. Um, so the uh designate and dispose, I think you mentioned this briefly, but I feel like every year. We end up doing this and then see pictures posted saying, why are we throwing away things that's money? So can we get a little explanation about what's going and what's salvageable and just so we know what's what with this?
So this is specific to um our school nutrition program and we have um. But I know that Jen Doolittle put together this list. Um, obviously you know, uh, that that department. Um, will use its equipment pretty much till the end of its useful life or that the program has moved in a direction where something is no longer. And so if you notice with this, they've even gone so far as to designate. Equipment that has value that can be resold at auction versus equipment that is no longer able to be utilized. It's actually beyond its end of usable life. And it is valuable because of the scrap metal, right? So. When we take things to scrap, metal is actually quite good right now, the prices. So when you take these things and you get that money back, that comes in as revenue. To their program and that actually adds to their operation budget. Same with auction, right? We have auction sites that we have available to us. That um they are, people can bid on these items and the goes to the highest bidder. It's not somebody. Oh, this person really was interested and they worked for us. There is no, we have no rights to be able to do that, right? This is actually the highest price. So these are the ways under um general municipal law and for public entities to. Take items that no longer are valuable to us, but that still have value to be able to get revenue in from disposing of them. So you can take a look, there's, you know, no, no longer needed. Some of these freezers are outdated. Some of these things, um, the coolers. Um, the steel tables, right? They will have value. They're sitting in storage right now. Their location is Danby. That means they are already in storage and. We are just trying to make revenue on the things that we no longer need.
Thank you.
I do feel compelled to thank uh Dan Bryman for, and other folks I'm sure, but to helping. Uh, reassess our surplus in auction policy to make sure that we do not get photos of chairs and. Uh, recycling centers for us, right? So we are, we have tried to be very, much more diligent over the past year that that does not take place. So. Thank you. Uh, that list was very helpful for me to read and the explanation was even more helpful. So I'm greatly appreciative. I'm thankful for that work. Appreciate it. Other questions, comments? Yes, Joe?
I have a five point eight question. This will be coming up.
Oh, we're, we're getting it. Oh, you're gonna, you're jumping to five point eight?
I, I was, if there isn't any other thing before then.
Can we go to five point seven?
I bet we could.
So if there's no more on five point one to five point six.
Oh, okay.
Those are the finance items that will be in the consent agenda. It will bring us to agenda item five point seven, which is a resolution to approve expenditures for board members to attend NISBA annual conventions. And we will entertain motions if needed.
I move to approve expenditures for board members, Erin Crowell, Emily Workman and Karen Yearwood to attend the NISBA. That's the New York State School Board Association Annual Convention. In New York City, New York on October twentieth to the twenty-second.
Second.
I heard Adam, moved by Karen, second by Adam. Discussion, debate, dialogue.
Yeah, I, I, um. I, I think Jill was the one who brought up uh at the last meeting, you know, concerned that this is one of the more expensive ones and just, you know. In response to kind of uh the position that we're in right now as a board. Uh, does it make sense to send three people? Could we send two people? I know that there's a lot of importance by going to these meetings with the training and everything else. Uh, but as a board, could we benefit by sending two people that could then bring that information back? And I just wanted to kind of. You know, pose that question because I don't even know the answers. I'm looking at people that have more experience and have been doing this for years, so.
Uh, I guess I have a question. So, um, I mean, some monies are allocated to us as a board in the budget. And my question is just that if we didn't spend that money and it was stopped anything to us, what would we have to that money? You know, to, is it, does it stay in a, you know, it's a lot of funding, does it stay in the board account, so to speak, and it would just stay there until the future? Um, you know, it is, I guess my main question is, is it coming at, at cost, something else? Uh, you know, that's one question. And then the second question would be, you know, what is the value of having? Uh, what members go and attend the conference, how much is learned at the conference? And, you know, how does that benefit, um, you know, the, the whole board? And so I guess those would just be the two aspects, one, one of the considerations. One is I think there is value growing back. Um, and then second, if money is being allocated to the board anyway, it can be spent as we like and it isn't going to go anywhere else, then. It gives difference to them to go back to the pot.
Any line item in the budget that is an expended goes back into fund balance. Um, and we build up fund balances each year, but it is allocated for the board to use for this purpose.
I guess as someone who's presented at this conference, I don't know, maybe ten times, I can speak to what I think the value is. Um, and who has attended multiple times as well. Um, we got a little bit of communication for folks who've been looking through the offerings already. And um there are significant offerings that are directly addressing. Uh, questions that we'll be having here as a, our own school district. So the ability to hear from. National experts, statewide experts, other school boards, how they're negotiating certain things, I have found to be exceptionally helpful. I think the networking that takes place, the people that you meet from other school boards. Um, that are facing similar issues, um, is something that I think is sort of invaluable that you can't really put a. Price tag on, but I know I'm still in conversation with folks that are downstate that I've met at this conference about some of the things that they're engaging with as well. Um, and then for me, lastly, I completely understand the question about expense. Um, I understand the fiscal, again, reality, which we find ourselves in. Um, it, one of the more expensive ones is sort of relative in terms of, uh, again, as an academic, who goes to conferences, this is not that kind of cost. Right? It doesn't, it's not going to cost six thousand dollars per person. It's far less than, than that. Um, and, but the, uh. I think what I'm trying to say is as board members, I think it's important for us to also demonstrate by doing. And that means continually learning. And so the ability to go to a conference and do our own form of professional development or board development. I think is key. And it's the very reason why we have a budget item that is designated for this very purpose. And I would dare say, and I don't know, I don't want to put Amanda on the spot, but I don't think we have ever come close to. Using all of those funds in that line budget item, even, even with this conference, we won't come close.
Uh, I'd like to add that, uh, you know, I've, I've been conflicted about this because I would love to throw these funds back. But, you know, Todd, to your point, I was just looking now, um, there are more than a dozen sessions in almost every time slot, right? And some of these are about, you know, cost savings, it's about staff reductions, it's about all of the things that we really need to know about now. In order to help our district. I, I think that, you know, I, I can never remember the expression, but you know, sometimes you, you, you save money, you lose money. What is the nickel dime expression? I can't. But it, this is something that I think is an investment for our board to be better and do the work it needs to do this year. And I, I, I have never gone and I'm, this is my sixth year and I wouldn't go. I don't have the spare time to go if it weren't this important.
And I want to go this year, but I, I'm deferring to other people. I should just say that. I have found this conference to be incredibly helpful.
As I stated last week, and I know through several communication that. It's important for board members to attend training for each and every one of us to look at what training opportunities it. Are given to us, especially even on our monthly onboard newspaper that comes out and to look at everything as well as a various email. Notices that come out too. With this conference, what I saw, I attended last year and why I wanted to attend again this year is that there. Different offerings and there's never more than enough that we need to gather. Last year when I attended, it was all on electric buses and electric vehicles. And I saw where we as a district stood, where that, where Amanda Verba's name was brought up several times of what. We've been doing and have done and, and um securing our electric vehicles to make sure that we meet the mandate. And the beauty, I brought back some of the information that I learned last year because it was on superintendent evaluation where. I even encouraged our board president not to be the facilitator and we voted that one down. So. So certain things that we, we should be doing where we may need to expense money on, we have to really think, um. To do our due diligence where that's concerned. Um, there's several offerings there that the beauty about, I, as I stated, we, well, we're at the moment an eight-person board, but. As an eight-person board, every one of us need to be engaged in some form of training because it's important to bounce off what's happening. And discuss it and see how we can gain and more insight into doing the work that we're doing here.
Any additional comments, thoughts, discussion?
I would also follow that up to say, I think it's almost irresponsible for the board to not gain as many professional development opportunities as possible. I have been to two, three meetings now and this, this volunteer job is exceptionally hard. And there is so much information that we don't know. There are so many decisions that we need to make quickly and thoughtfully and, uh. And the lack of experience of any new board member to come on here and feel as though we can just kind of. Feel our way through this year is, I, I think. I agree that any, any opportunity, both within Ithaca and outside of, it will really truly help us be better board members. We are doing a service directly to the district because making uninformed or difficult decisions that we haven't taken the time to truly vote about is. Can have pretty dire consequences. And I think that this is a really unique opportunity to do that and I don't think that. Um, there is any way to, non-organization or, or a. A, a, anything that you without, you know, things that we can, um, how to do them better and I'm keen to think that we were coming to do this part of the vacuum without. Without having the insights from the board around that community and dealing with different circumstances, different situations that are. Different cities and towns and communities. So I think it's that. I think it'd be really unfortunate to, to miss this opportunity and other opportunities as well. We have the opportunity to. Vote online and in person.
And there is no virtual option for this one. So, yeah.
Uh, should, yes, Joe?
I'm still voting no. I'm still voting no because um I think any information that's available at this conference or any conference, and I've been to many in my lifetime. Can be found elsewhere. And um. You can find it online, you can find it through literature searches, you can, you know, call people up who are presenting. And uh. I think we have things around here closer to home that we could learn from. I'm certainly not against people learning. Um. I'm sort of fond of it. So I hear your arguments and I don't agree with them, so I'll be voting no on this.
I appreciate it. I disagree with you as a presenter. Come to one of my presentations and tell me you can find it somewhere else. I'd like to see that one. Uh different discussions, debates, conversation? I will say, if this were to pass, there is an expectation, it's in policy that there is a report out. So it's not like you would take the information and that's it. There's an expectation of sharing and as well. So if we're for good to go, we'll call the question, all in favor? All opposed? Joe and I are gonna do, we're gonna present next year, Jill, that's what we're gonna do together. Fantastic, motion passes. Uh this brings us to agenda item five point eight. Um and I don't know if you want to lead, I also know that Jill has some things to say, too, you want you want them to lead first, Jill, and then bring it your way?
I think they need to lead and do we have any graphics on this to share?
Yeah, yes, we do. We have a few images and slides.
Great. Here they come.
So was that a answer to his question? So we have images, do you want to ask us something first or you want to just start?
Before we begin there, my apologies, I wanted to say this afterwards. Um that last conversation that we had as a board, I'm very appreciative of. Uh we know this is going to be a year where every single decision that has to do with finances will be debated, discussed. And we also want to make sure we're doing our due diligence and so I want to thank our board members for engaging in that conversation. Um we are going to have differences of opinion, rightfully so, necessarily so. And we're going to try to make the best fiscal, financial decisions we can for the district. So I wanted to make sure I started by saying that and acknowledging that conversation, so thank you, everybody. Dr. Brown?
Yes, we have some images and slides and some uh questions we were posed to the board at the end of uh the slideshow. So I'll turn it up to Mr. Lynn first.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. So uh last week when we met, we spent a brief amount of time reviewing. A document that shows all the ways we can access what we've talked about over the last twelve to eighteen months. Showing um everything from HR committee to um. Fin- finance committee to general board meeting, all the slides, there's a plethora of information and um some really great materials there. And so. Once our budget had to get re- reorganized and redesigned. Um after the budget vote in June, uh we had to figure out how to reallocate and resort. Set out all of our resources. So what we're gonna go go through today, sort of what our budget is. Coming up here and then, you know, what are some of the some of the priorities that we had? And then uh what are some of the the places where we took reductions? So just let this slide sit up here for a minute. Um and you can can see of our budget of one hundred and sixty-three million dollars for this year. Where everything is currently allocated. So a couple of things to know, um for salaries and benefits, those are negotiated items, um there's there's. Um there's not a lot of flexibility in terms of uh how that works. Contracts are negotiated with our um various bargaining units. Um and along with that, since the benefits and fringe elements as well. You can see um from our discussions earlier in this evening, items like equipment, material. Um some of our. Contractual obligations are in other lines. So um well, we can come back to this in a little bit, but just moving forward. Um this gets us to, when building our budget. And trying to allocate our funds. These were the previous, and this is a slide taken from our our May meeting. Um where we discussed um with the community and the board what our priorities are and and this is where we 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 looked at that. Um so I'm not going to go ahead and read those all to you, but you can see uh. These were some of the main ideas that we we operated under. And we wanted to maintain focus on things like literacy, math and inclusion. Um we were okay with causing purchases on some equipments and supplies where needed. Um and then there were changes to administrative costs. Um that was a a theme that we heard throughout last spring. Um and then also uh reductions in class sizes at both the element or increases in class sizes at the uh secondary and elementary level. Alright, so uh let's dive into what we then did in terms of just broad. What I'm going to do here is go through some broad strokes of of where we um realize either efficiencies. Um and how we reallocated things. So to get started at the elementary level. Um and Mary can speak a little bit about this. One of the big things is we actually reduced our elementary classroom sections by. Um seven seventeen um with the seventeen student minimum.
That's spread across all very, all very schools and some of that is re norming. Uh due to COVID, when we were cohorting students in at that time, I actually, I would say. Really robust period. Uh we had class sizes and cohorts of ten to twelve students based on on the distancing. And so there is a some re norming and this year moving up to class size seventeen. It resulted in seventeen sections. And then the fewer, the one fewer pre-K section was a reflection on enrollment trends. So based on that grant, filling the class sizes up to full enrollment. Um we could still serve those families, however, not at all of those locations. So that um that pre-K section was at Benfield Elementary, they had two pre-K sections.
So similarly, uh because of because of a lot of these reallocations, um there was um three point five special education. Um allocations, because it wasn't even so much the position, but reallocating some of those. Um and no, we're no longer needing them. Um not continuing extended day at the elementary level. Uh we had art and music integration time, part of that reduction comes from having fewer sections. Um then you have fewer needs um to fill in and meet some of the art and music. Um needs and then uh we had uh Spanish only at South Hill that we also moved away from. Continuing on at the elementary level. Oh, that's it at the elementary level, secondary level, uh continuing to the secondary level. Uh similarly, we. Use that seventeen um for class sizes and that led us to one point five ELA. Reduction at IHS, we had ELA reduction to LACS. Um counselor positions at um LACS in the high school level, foreign language at um. Boynton, Dewitt, NIOS, social worker, and then um Avid and Avid, we actually moved into some of our other programming. And again, I just want to frame that these are broad strokes of things you would also find if you went through. I'll simplify it greatly, but this office is going to spend twelve percent less on pencils. There's little things there too, but I'm trying to um provide a a big picture of some of the things that we've done. Um also at the secondary level, uh uh fewer teaching assistants at IHS. Um less or one point seven less science, um some reading AIS reduced and then um math as well. And again, these are, almost all of these are tied to enrollment data. So uh also, we had administrative level adjustments. And by administrative, we mean um. Decreased labor costs across the board, but but that I that can come in the form of both administrators, folks, you know, working. As administrator in the our IPDA or director roles. Um you know, you see that with elementary APs being reduced, educators for inclusion reduction. But also on folks, teachers on special assignments, working as engagement specialist or some of these other roles in our district. Um technology, for example, those were also reduced. We also had administrative um reductions, I believe it's on the next slide. Um. There it is, uh at district office level, um you know, we no longer have a deputy superintendent. Um our uh chief business executive is scheduled to leave the organization. Um equity officer position was reduced and then and then we've had a handful of administrative assistant roles reduced as well. Lastly, uh at a district wide, um we've tackled, we've decreased overtime budgets in some of our. Our um with some of our units, um this is not to say that we won't have overtime, but um. We will have uh stronger checks and balances and and tighter scrutiny and uh. With our hope just in general that uh, you know, that's a lesser cost. It's one of those, you know, when anytime we're dealing with a budget, that's a, it's a guess in time, right? Um particularly with some of these unknowns, uh decrease technology purchasing. Um decreasing the transfer to pre-K, um transfer to capital. Um contract services in at facilities, custodial support at facilities. Um limited program TAs um at the elementary level and really across the district. Reduced cell phone lines, um uh we've taken a taken many, many cell phones are. Are no longer going to be on our on our cell phone bill and um building sub roles discontinued.
Zach, can you tell us what a program TA is?
Yeah, absolutely. A program TA is math TA. Um mainly family liaison was also a program TA, they're primarily, they still exist in pre-K as part of that grant. But don't work with um school aged children. We still have ENL TAs. Many of those jobs, also I will add, um I should say many, let me not qualify it. Some of those jobs were not filled for multiple years. And so when we're looking at class relatively at what kind of uh allo- reallocations we're going to make. Or cuts that plays in the decision-making to.
Something I would also add in terms of the, you saw like reduction in elementary classrooms, that sort of thing. Uh as stated in our meetings during the spring, as much as possible of this has been done through attrition. So on average, most school years in terms of the ITA, fifty or so folks exit our organization. And then um a lot of this is done through attrition. So uh it's why, you know, it's it's trying to juggle that. Something also I'd like to commend our um our leaders around the district as we've seen adjustments. Uh you know, different classes needing to get moved to different class numbers and having to adjust across elementary schools. We've had to move folks back and forth a little bit, um some of that will be, has been reflected in our board reports. But everyone's been very understanding of of that need and, you know, we've had a lot of uh successful meetings and um dialogues. Around our district about this sort of thing. So um just one thing to highlight, this comes goes back to our pie chart, but uh. This is just a history on slide, just to provide some context. The biggest drivers of what we're doing here, um it comes down to salary. So this is our, uh you see twenty twenty-three, twenty-four's draft, we're finalizing over the next several weeks. What our exact numbers were for twenty-three, twenty-four, the folks in the business office are hard at work at that. And um and then you can see twenty-four, twenty-five is what we have budgeted currently. Um such as providing context for um while we did have a lot of these shifts. This is what our our initial mom numbers are looking at. So with that being said, that's sort of the the drive-by overview of of where we went. Um based upon the information we had and what we needed to do. Um it it then sort of hands it off to you all with a couple of questions for you that, you know, for you all to have going forward. Um regarding, we had our district priority slides. Do we want to revisit that? Um have any of those priorities shifted? Are there things we want to add? Are there things we want to look at further? Is there more information needed? Well, we are really hoping as we sit here with you all today and in future meetings is. What is it that the board wishes to know more about to make informed decisions going forward? Um what what areas might we want to look at in either various committees or in the whole board sessions? Um to figure out what to do going forward.
Board colleagues, uh these questions or any additional questions that you may have or comments? Go ahead, Jill.
I don't have any interest in changing our priorities as we have. Have you laid them out here and as we've discussed them? Um. And I feel like I've had a whole lot of information over the the past year. I think two things come to mind, one is. I wonder where, how we can refine the process. Earlier on for. I guess dispute is 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 earlier on, I think is a better time to be saying things like. Maybe we need to increase cat class size, what would it look like then if we could? I don't have the answers here, I'm saying. I didn't feel like I was really in the budget process until April. Even though I've gone to every OACM meeting, I've actually, I've gone to every meeting, I think. Um so I think what I would like us to do as far as a board process. Is talk about when we get the information and we get the proposals from. Um departments or or sections that we say. When can we talk about how we might align this with priorities as a proposal for something for the whole board? There isn't, there isn't going to be for the most part. A board opinion until very near the end, if at all. There are eight people on the board and and we're all going to have thoughts and our job is to try to talk through them with each other and hope to achieve. Either consensus or a majority. And I I think we all respect that and understand that, but if if we could have a better sense early on. Even so simple as to say at the end of a presentation, what what trouble do you see with this? You know, do you have ideas about how the special ed division could do things differently? What concerns you about the presentation so far? I think that would help it get into my head about where and how. I I can express concerns about things before we get too far along. Um the other, the answer that you didn't pose here, Zach. Or the question that you didn't pose here is that I fear by following our priorities, which has been done fairly admirably here. We are, we're at risk of throwing out the baby with the bathwater. I think, you know, you can follow priorities and still risk making some bad decisions. And I'm concerned about the cut of the building sub program in its entirety. Um and I'm concerned about the Latin and Mandarin programs being cut in their entirety. Um because I think in each of those three cases, and they're the three I know the best at this point. In each of those three cases, there are people who had a belief that things would be continuing. And it's, I think it is possible for us to continue some of those things in some way. For a short period of time and provide a bit of a softer transition for people. For example, we don't, we wouldn't have to con- continue Mandarin at the Dewitt, at the middle school level. But we could choose as a board to say, we'd like to see what it would look like. If people who already had two years of Mandarin under the belt could have a third and gain their sequence. The the same for Latin, we could say, we're not going to teach anyone new Latin. But if somebody has two years of Latin in, we could look at what it would cost us to give them the third year. It's it's, you know, there's sort of an implicit contract lots of times. We, we never said to anyone we would provide Latin forever, we never said to any one that building subs at a certain level would be there forever. But. People have expectations and people make plans and uh. I would like us to see, to pay some more attention to those issues and I'd be happy to listen to other issues that other people want to raise.
Yeah, I'd like to add like that and um, you know, and also just say that there that there may be some ways of staying within. Um you know, and also honoring the success of pre- year, for example, talking about CAT, particularly class sizes. We have lots of classes now where we have differentiated learning, people are learning at different levels. Um I'm just using this as one example that, you know, potentially applying language. Last, you know, students into different levels, it's maybe possible to save, you know, save that program. So I mean, I I agree with what you're saying in the sense of um, you know, we we gave a general guideline and we obviously wanted a general. So, I mean, I, I agree with what you're saying in the sense of, you know, we, we gave a general guideline and we obviously wanted a general guidelines. And then sometimes there could be some exceptions to the rule, which I hope that, you know, that maybe can be. I guess I'll just also add like, I'm sensitive to, I guess, both things of when people come to public comment and talk about that important issue. We have lots of community members coming to talk about this. I think it's good to hear those people out. And it's also important to note that there are some of those people that don't come to the meetings. And we don't get from those people. And I think we need to think about those programs as well, when we spoke up for them, but you know, maybe they're low cost programs that have value that, you know, we can come up with a creative solution as well. And I, last thing I would say, and I think it's very complicated when we're, we're trying to go back. Obviously, there's eight people on the board, you all have different ideas, perspectives. It's very hard to go back and say, let's pick these two. But I, I guess it's also important that you, for those people, I think.
I'd like to, a couple of points with this. I think as a board, we're going to have to talk about our priorities and how they have to shift based on the budget. Because I'm not sure we can fulfill our mission with how many million cut? I mean, from the original proposed budget and then from the budget that was voted down and then the tax cap budget. I think the other thing that we really have to consider, and I want to stress that, if I could have all these roles that are gone, come back, I would. Like this is not about that. I care deeply and I, I see this as what could be a very difficult school year. Do these cuts even get us where, where we need to be for this year? Are we okay? Are there more cuts we have to look at as the year goes on? I want to know where our fund balance is at and, and where we stand there. And I think really importantly, as we make any decision moving forward, you know, Amanda, during budget season, presented a trajectory based on what budget would be approved. And I think as a board, we need to look at that and examine it closely and think about taxpayers and community members, ourselves included, not, not wanting to vote anything but a tax cap budget again. And where does that put us for the next school year? Considering all the things we have to look at, giving our teachers raises because they're in negotiation, all of the things coming up. I think we have to start focusing on the future. Because I, I don't, I don't see us having extra funds to put anything back. We have to look at, how can we make sure we don't have more cuts next year? Because people are angry. People are hurting. People don't have money. We don't know what budget is going to pass next year. We have to look at the future so we can at least preserve what we have now. I, I think it's dangerous to say, what can we add back and what can we spend from the fund balance? When our future is really just uncertain as a school district.
So the question about district priorities, I would ask board colleagues to do something that I know you all love doing, which is look at your calendars and let's carve out time. We need a, one or two at least board development sessions. And I think that's a broader conversation for the board to engage. I would dare argue with facilitation, but we'll, we'll talk about that. But I think that's a conversation that we have to have. And I don't think whatever we would try to do in a rush now between now and the start of school year, it would not be helpful nor would it be time well spent. Right? That we have to find some other things, but those priorities moving forward is one thing. I greatly appreciate Jill's conversation about being in the process. In some regards earlier, I think all of us felt that. I mean, this is the second revote budget that I can recall. And that is, it's just flat out disruptive. Beyond cuts, beyond anything else, all timelines get crunched. Everything else changes. And so I think it's a, I'm saying this with, with grace and humility for board members to think about being much more involved in the finance committee as we're putting things together throughout the school year. So we don't get hit with that in March and like, oh, now it's taking place. Cause some of these questions that we're going to be posed with will be discussed. September, right? We'll start looking at various departments, things like that, projections, those sorts of things. And so I think that's going to be a key thing. And then in terms of where we find ourselves, I think this is sort of a, an ongoing conversation about what does it mean for the next couple of weeks as well to get folks ready? And so I don't have any suggestions about that at this moment. I'm still trying to take in all the information and, and process it. But I do know it, this is going to be an ongoing set of conversations. And so just asking our board members, I'm sure we all are prepared for it, but we're going to be having these conversations, it may seem every single meeting and that may be what's necessary.
I, I believe I said this last year and I'll say it again this year. We, we do start the budget process early because I'm even seeing a document that was put in board docs, August fifteen, twenty twenty-three of the timeline that it comes from the finance committee and then it's also discussed at different times at the whole board. It went through budget one oh one and went through the different processes and building up to that. What happens is that once we get around February, things start moving quickly. Reason being because we have to report and have a timeline of when school districts need to present to the public and, and get feedback, have a budget here. And that's why it looks like it's a crunch period at the end. And unfortunately with this year, we know with property tax assessment there, everyone came on us and, and I think it was in March twenty twenty-four. But the process is an ongoing process. And just like with this discussion that we're having now, it's just, well, do we want to create a full budget at this timeline or we're building? Because we've been building on it when we have the budget developers and the various teams come together and always report at finance as well as we've had it at facilities committee too. So it's, I guess, being more attentive to what the process is, getting the timeline, get, if we're getting an updated timeline, because the last timeline I'm seeing at the moment is twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. And I know that we would have a timeline. I think there was something presented last week with links that, although it's not in board docs yet, but, but that, if that timeline so that we can all see that. And, and it is our responsibility to as board members, not only to have a committee that we're connected to, but to be aware of what's being discussed at the different committee levels.
Additional board comments, questions, concerns?
I, I do actually just, I mean, I did, the one question I think that can be answered now is, do we think these cuts are where we need to be for the school year?
It's one of those situations where governance and management are in two parallel paths that aren't going to cross for a while. We're trying to open up school. We're trying to fill positions. We have openings. We will open up, kids are going to show up and we're going to be fine. But we will be filling positions, we will be hiring chills. We've talked about, we'll be analyzing every position that comes open, looking at every overtime line, every furniture line. So when we think about a budget, the budget is ongoing. And we know that we are looking to massage and find savings, not just before school starts, but throughout the next year. So that's a, it's an interesting question, a great question. And I hope I'm, I'm giving you the answers in the ways in which we're thinking about it. There's a governance conversation that needs to take place around priorities and goals and long range fiscal planning. And then there's a management one that we're having right now about make sure babies have young people, have adults in spaces and teaching and learning is going to take place in the ways in which we expect.
So one of the things I am hearing about, I'm sorry, one of the things I am hearing about sort of our process. And I agree that we could spend a little bit more time on process and we all may be able to agree with that is both an invitation to, for lack of a better word, critique and celebrate, right? Like what concerns you and what excites you? And we could be a little bit more intentional about pausing and asking those questions at various stages where people may feel like the input may have been earlier as opposed to later. And so we'll, and I hope to try to facilitate as much as I can at, from, from, from the seat. That's, that's one part. Another part is a question is that what happens when we do receive significant communication from around whatever topic and how we respond. And that's a conversation that Adam and I have been having briefly, like, do we respond to everyone that writes us? We get eighty-five, ninety-five, two hundred messages. How do we craft that? There may be disagreement in how we agree with that as well. To the community who's out there listening and watching, please know that board members, in my experience, read every single email that comes our way or a letter or let's talk portal. So whether, whether you've heard from us or not at this point in time does not mean that internally we have not, we've, that we've been discussing it, talking about it, dialoguing, trying to be innovative, workshopping and doing some other things in that regard. So those are two things I know we can do moving forward. For the immediate, I would recommend again that we have a couple of board development sessions where we may be able to address some questions. I don't know if we can do that in the time, the time that we need. But maybe that also means we build out more time next Tuesday to do, is it curriculum next Tuesday? So we can't do it next Tuesday. We have a curriculum meeting. But we, we may have to anticipate having a slightly longer meeting to be able to have some additional time to address these various questions that we know we need to discuss. And we want to make sure we have these conversations in public. That's the way in which I'm thinking about, I'm trying to summarize some of the things I've heard. And I don't know if I'm capturing or not, so I'm looking to my colleagues.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I think you know, board development session, we'll talk about record specifically, you know, part of, part of the longer meeting, but you know, by September. I think we have to.
I have to.
So that would be a board development session, public board development session or what is?
It could be. I mean, I, I think it's probably a combination of both. I would also recommend that we have a non-public board development session that is also around governance and how we, how we govern. And then I think there is part of that conversation that absolutely has to happen in public as well. So for me, I see it as a both end.
Cause we do have a October twenty-ninth board development session and we attempted to have one during the summer, but.
People were gone, but I, I think we may be able to do something over the next couple of weeks. I think we actually have to, I think to Adam's point, I think we have to. And we'll try to figure that out. Yes, it may mean another evening for someone. It may mean a Thursday meeting, but we'll work with the team to make that happen. Additional questions? Needs asked?
I guess I have one, which is just about time. I didn't even say like right in time. Like what does that actually mean? When, you know, even building subs, we were here last week, like we're still waiting for like a final. Like when do those final communications, like when do the cuts like finally happen? When does somebody not show up towards the, the next day?
We're moving forward with the budget that we proposed that was approved and we're now implementing. If the board wishes for us to change course and move in a different direction with any position, any priorities, that should have happened before, but I, as soon as possible, get us an information because that will impact what shows up on your personnel reports on Tuesday. But unless we hear otherwise, we're moving forward with the recommended, recommended approaches that we've already shared. Yes.
I guess I just have one question about, like when you said, unless we hear otherwise, what, what is, what are the logistics of hearing?
Yeah, an example, and I don't want to start a fury, but I mean, I've, I've heard Latin and Mandarin mentioned four times this afternoon, this evening. That would require us to offer that, build that schedule, have young people's schedules changed, all done within the matter of how many working, I wish the high school folks were here. But that would take a significant shift in the pattern, the pathway we already on. As kids are getting their schedules and getting ready to start school, building subs, that could be interesting too, because I, I don't know where those folks who were planning to be building subs, where they're looking to fill other positions. So these things would take some time to work through if you made a decision tonight. Again, we have a plan to implement the budget and the proposal we put in place. While I'll use your words last, from last spring, Jill, we're learning how much of a stomach people have for the kind of cuts that are needed. And so we, I am one who proposed a budget that I felt confident in and we had to adjust it. We've had to make those adjustments over the summer and it's hard. And I am committed to implementing and starting the school year with those hard decisions, knowing how difficult they are going to be and seeing the people that I love. So I'm okay on my end, but I'm looking at y'all about whether or not to hold the line or to change some things.
I mean, I don't, maybe this has been said, I don't know, for a long time, certainly. Somebody who is always listening, so I'll ask anyway. I think it would be helpful for people, for the community to understand that this is not like your executive team, like sitting down at the table and just kind of making cuts. Would you, would you be mind like sharing and kind of what the collective process that you all undertook in order to kind of land?
Yeah, I mean, it may be a good time to share that document. Emily, you can put that document up. Because the timeline and the process we as a team, I have the people using my name, we go through to develop a budget proposal. And that is not, in no way is that me or a few people making decisions in isolation. Even, yeah, go ahead, please. Sure. Yes. So I'll, I'll talk to that. Late June, when we had a finalized budget or a dollar amount. The executive team, along with budget developers, had some, some time to talk about what was possible. The board gave us direction to put together a plan over the summer, which is what we did in collaboration with various groups and with the various, and I can say, we didn't get a chance to talk to everyone. Some folks weren't here. Some, some decisions needed to be made. Some decisions need to be made just with the executive team. And so those were, so it was a combination of all of those things. And our presentation to you all, was it August, about what we were, what we were thinking initially? The last meeting more around priorities than tonight around finalizing some decisions. So that's it. It seems, it seems like two years, but it really is about two months at most that we've had to make these decisions.
I also just want to highlight the, again, the calendar and the, the calendar challenges, right? So normally in a, in a decent year, a budget would be approved in May. And whether the budget was lower or higher, we would have conversations throughout May, all the way through June, including at the reorg meeting. This time the budget was, number was approved in June, which gave us about, what I want, I forgot what the vote was. Was it two weeks before the reorg meeting? And then the vast majority of us are gone for the month of July. So as I know, a number of board members who are advocating for trying to get together, it, it quickly became clear that it was a near impossibility to even to field a quorum during the month of July. We just couldn't do it. Folks were traveling, folks were, had other responsibilities, had plans. And so that really also makes the timeline seem much more expedited because we come back in August. And it's like, here you go. And we're trying to, you know, also get our mind around it as well. And so I want to, I say that not for us, because we were living it and through email and phone calls and text messages, but also saying it for the community, that it puts a rush on everybody, included trying to make this kind of happen. And when there's a month that sort of gets sort of, I want to say lost, but we weren't, we weren't prepared the way in which we may have been if we were planning, saying, you know, first week in July, let's hold on to, maybe we can do some board development sessions. And Adam and I have had this conversation already as board officers, that may be something that we thought, we think about moving forward that right after the reorg meeting, we think about having a board, a board development session already scheduled. So we're not scrambling or at least we have something. And if we don't need it, then we don't need it and great. But trying to, as you all know, it's a little frustrating, right? Trying to, how many doodle polls can you do in a week? Sorry, Emily, I know you had to do all of them. But I think that's part of what is taking place as well. So we're, we are still playing a little bit of, you know, catch up, for lack of a better word. I, I appreciate Dr. Brown, the idea that the budget is still, not the budget isn't a moving target, but the items and how we're going to make this happen is a moving target. I know you've been hearing this from the board, the process for us will be important and information will be important. And I'm sure we'll continue to ask lots of questions and so, and express our disagreements. I want to make sure that that's in the table as well. Next steps board. Have some information for us for Tuesday that we've asked for. Go from there.
You remind me again, what y'all asked for?
You're, we're going to have a agenda setting.
Okay.
And we will be very explicit in terms of.
And our, on next Tuesday, our, is going to be a soon board development to do the.
And our on next Tuesday are is going to be a soon board development to do the priorities to review if the priorities match the budget.
Yeah.
Uh we can put that out, if that's a request for an agenda item, then I think then.
Yeah.
Sure, yes.
And can we pu, can we internally share or wherever share, you know, the the board goal document and all of the things that we already have? That has been established, so everyone has that.
What board goal is that?
I I like, there must be, right? Like the board goals that were created, right? We we really need to view what what is there, what what, we need to have a a paper, not paper, but you know, document, thank you. It's past, it's past my bedtime now.
It's going around in two weeks that we can find. Some kind of meeting. Oh, I think it's in there.
Yep.
It was better. Does that fit into that?
Very good.
I meant, would you please?
All right, well, if I'm not hearing anything else, then we'll bring this meeting to a close. Thank you, everybody, for being here on a Tuesday, uh and we will see you next Tuesday with some additional.